If there any other comments, just let us know. We're about to start. And I couldn't think of a better way of opening this one-of-a-kind session, as I understand in talking with people, than with prayer. The same family that prays together stays together. And you know, us in Waller County, we're not going anywhere. Pastor, and I couldn't think of a... And I know all of you have wonderful ministers and pastors at your churches, but the best one I could find was the one that passes my church. Pastor Fred Thomas of Greater St. Peter, please come up and bless us if you would.
Let us pray. Father, we are grateful and privileged to be able to be summoned to this place tonight. I want to thank you that we have representation throughout Waller County and the law enforcement department. I ask that you would bless the men and women who patrol our streets, who protect us as citizens of Waller County.
Yes.
Bless this meeting tonight. It was ears to hear and hearts to receive. I pray for every Texas Ranger, every police chief, every deputy sheriff, every constable, every Texas Ranger that's present, especially our DPS officers. So bless us now, as we go into this meeting, this forum tonight. In Jesus' name.
Amen. Most of you may know me. My name is David Allen. I came to Purview in June of 1973 and fell in love with the place so much that by that September, I recruited thirty-seven classmates out of San Antonio to join me down here at Purview. I was recruited for the university and for Army ROTC. And when I moved to Los Angeles, I was so... Continued to be tied to Purview that I was bringing a hundred students here every year for sixteen years. And then I, not looking for it, but I created an award and stated from the Vice President of Academic Affairs Office that I was the number-one recruiter for the university. I say that to share with you. I just want you to understand my concern. That that's all. I moved back here about three years ago. My wife recently retired after twenty-nine years in the Army, and she's here with me. So waking up in September and having a drug bust going across the street from where I was asleep doesn't sit well with me. But I have to say and commend Mr. Elton Mathis, our Waller County District Attorney, because when I sat in his... Well, in the county commissioner's court this past Wednesday morning, and they were there discussing the landfill. But in the course of that, our district attorney touched on his concerns as he had on the TV news with what was going on, you know, in Purview regarding these murders and the kind of things that lead to those murders. And the county judge, Trey Duhon, he asked the district attorney, "Well, how many murders have there been in Waller County?" When he said just the four in Purview, I couldn't sit here any longer. This started as a result of this past Wednesday. And I certainly want to start off with commending our law enforcement officers and their leaders for being here because the front page... Oh, and this is the drug bust in Purview, across the street from where me and my wife sleep. So it's not a figment of my imagination by any means. But having Purview on the front page of the papers just doesn't sit well. What I'd like to do is have the law enforcement officers... And I understand the sheriff is on his way coming from a meeting in Austin, but he definitely can... Oh, he's here? See, I told you he was on his way, and he made it. But if you could let him know to come up front, Sergeant Garrett, when he comes in. And to set the tone, I'd like us to leave here with something other than a feel-good because I get that in church on Sunday. You know, this is not what we need. We have real problems in Waller County. And these four in the last ten months in Purview, we want to make sure we see what we can in terms of our law enforcement working together and seeing what concerns come from you who have shared a lot of things with me over the last three years. But they need to come out here, and some of those we may have in the comments. But Chief, if we'll start with you so that everyone knows each one of you, and we'll have the sheriff join us as he comes in. Just introduce yourself and let us know who you are.
I'm David Hartley. I'm the Chief of Police in Hempstead. I've been with the city of Hempstead for twenty-three years. Been chief for the last six and a half.
I'm Larry Johnson, Chief of Police here in Purview. Been here since December of 2013.
Good evening. My name is Elton Mathis. I'm the District Attorney for Waller County. This is my ninth year to serve as your DA.
Hi, I'm Xena Sees. I'm the Chief of Police for Purview A&amp;M University. I've only been at the university almost two years, not quite two years, but I have been in law enforcement for twenty-seven years.
I'm Phil Rehack. I'm the Chief over at Waller. Been the chief there for six years.
I'm Gerald Holgall. I'm here representing Constable Smith. He should be here shortly. I have been in law enforcement now approximately thirty-five years and a short time here in the city of Purview and the county of Waller, but you tend to do a good job, I do.
Great. And our Sheriff Glenn Smith is coming in. You come right on in, Sheriff. And you still have to introduce yourself.
Well, as he stated, Glenn Smith, I'm your County Sheriff in six and a half years with the police chief in Hempstead. I've got thirty-six-year experience.
Thank you. Before we go any further, and I certainly don't want to forget, let's give these folks around the floor. Now, we have some... There's a sign-in sheet of individuals who wanted to speak right outside. Would you bring that up for me? Thank you, ma'am. Now, one of the things we want to do, since we have several comments and quite a few people who have something they'd like to share, I want to make sure that we understand we've got a maximum of two minutes because we want to get through and have a discussion and definitely have all of this incredible experience working on our behalf. But the piece I want to touch on was the successful operation conducted by the Special Operations Division. They did two of them by our sheriff's office in drug busts. But one of the things they stated even in the article was feedback from the community. They can arrest these bad guys, but they need our help in when we have suspicions and what have you. And they even have a number in there. So I want us, again, to leave with a working together, but how and what we want them to share with us, how they can do that, what they've been doing, what they can do differently. Okay? We've got... Oh, one of the things I wanted to share. We've got a couple of students that made it. Did you have anything you wanted to share with us to live this off from a student perspective? We call ourselves a college town quite a bit. I know you just graduated, so...
It is an honor to... How y'all doing? My name is James Bickham. I recently graduated in December. It's an honor to be able to speak to a lot of honorable people in this room. I would like to say that just from a student perspective, it's a lot. I kind of didn't want to be open, but I mean, to speak about the murders, there's a lot that just had to change in this environment. Of course, Purview is a school. It's a kind of a young town in a sense. A lot of people come in and out. So of course, we don't have a lot of traffic, but it's going to be a better job of just all the counties, all the law enforcement just combining and really working together for the community. When you say a lot of community, I do commend them for the drug busting and several successful operations they did have. But from a student's perspective, it's a lot going on within this campus that has to come kind of be improved from Purview's perspective, from inside, from Purview. A lot of people that wasn't involved in those murders is kind of people that shouldn't have been in this area no longer. So they come through, they have problems in school, they struggle in school, and they're stuck out here. Once I was in that same situation where I ended up being stuck in this environment without housing, which you got to survive. So that's what's in a lot of these students' mind states, is survival. And the way they turn to the means is by any means trying to get that meal, get that place to sleep. So with that being said, of course, these murders look bad on the town, on the area, and just in this community, but it just has to be a better job of the law enforcement, the faculty, or not the faculty, but basically the law enforcement kind of really reaching out to them. So I know they do a lot of patrolling. Like, for instance, in a lot of the communities where we kind of interact, like, it's going to be part of this is key, the students. So of course, they want to interact, but just the overall, you know, so just kind of surveillance and just the way they go about the operations, it has to improve. It has to improve. There's a lot more I can say, but I'm going to just take those two minutes and say that. I do commend them, and it has been successful, but it just has to be a better combination of all efforts. Appreciate it.
Now, there's another component to this. I mean, our safety and issues, but it's interesting how another component to this crime situation has evolved that we're aware of the problem. We're not necessarily aware of the connection. And we have a gentleman here, a businessman in the community, Mr. Rodney Gray.
Good evening, chiefs, DA, citizens. My name is Rodney Gray. I am one-half owner of Creekside Apartments on 1098, 22063, FM 1098. August 4th, I believe, that was, I went and I met with the mayor. I asked to meet with him. I took my loan broker. Reason why I asked to meet with him is because the loan broker kept coming back telling me banks were refusing to come out of here because of the violence. And at that time, it was two murders. Now it's four murders. I don't see anything changing. What I like, the panel of chiefs and senior officers here, is to tell us, how can they come in and help the city? Because apparently, the city needs some help. And that's it. I'm done.
Well, I think that's a good lead-in because now you understand we've got our safety, we've got these problems. I know the university is mandated to try to get to twelve thousand or more students in the next few years. Our number-one employer in Waller County is that university. Over $500 million budget. So they're improving that in the twenty to forty million dollars that the students drop in the county through their cash payments with excess financial aid money. That's what we're talking about. So we're not just talking about PV. We have had the four murders. That's just the way it is. But there's an economic impact in addition to the safety impact that we need to take a look at as well. And that's what I think with Mr. Gray and them basically having him pre-approved to quadruple that apartment complex, they had actually cleared the land. And then the site visits turned off the investors, the financial people. That's what we need to be aware of. Ms. Amy Boykin. Did you have something you wanted to share?
No, no.
Oh, just sign it.
I grew up here, and I'm just so happy that you are doing what you're doing. We just look forward to helping.
Thank you, ma'am. Why don't we... Well, let me go through this list real quick. Raymond.
Rogers.
Rogers, Mr. Rogers?
Actually, my question was concerning the point where I was on Highway 290. Pulled into the new service station just west of Hempstead. It's an Exxon. And when I pulled in there, a man caught me as soon as I got out of my truck and asked if I'd like to buy a home theater system. And he said he was on his way to Cowfield. Well, I know Cowfield been blown up, so there ain't much chance that he gonna need to go there. And he said he had another one in the trunk, and he had one in his backseat. And they were still in the box and still strapped together. So I suspect that he was a criminal. But what do you do in that situation? I couldn't get his license number. My eyesight's not that good. So I couldn't get his license number, but he was in a red sports car. And he took off towards Austin. He didn't go to Cowfield. But I'd just like to know what to do in that situation.
Well, that sounds like the expertise up front. I can't touch that one. Anyone want to?
You know, since you're talking about, you know, just west of Hempstead, that establishment just opened recently.
Yes.
I've instructed our officers to patrol it because it is in the city. It is part of the city.
Oh, it is part of the city? Okay. But you didn't have time to make a phone call at that point in time?
Well, but when you get a chance, you can make a phone call and let us know because otherwise, we're not going to know. And we have a lot of traffic that comes through Waller County. I'm not just going to say Hempstead. As I stated earlier, I've been here twenty-three years. The traffic on 290 has increased exponentially. You know, it's not like it was back in 1991. I get on the highway, and sometimes it takes me fifteen minutes just to get, you know, through a crossover to go to the house. So we've got so much traffic coming through. We need your help when situations like that occur. You know, if you can just get his vehicle description best you can, you know, what he looks like, and just give us a call.
He was young enough to be a college student. But I told the store owner when I went to the store, and he said, "Where's he at?" He said, "I read the card." Well, I looked, and of course, he's already gone. But the guy wanted to buy something from him. He wasn't wanting to know because he wanted to turn him in.
So I mean, that's where we need citizens, vehicles, we need help. We can't be everywhere all the time. So we have to depend... If anybody up here disagrees with me, but, you know, we have to depend on folks like you. Give us a heads up. Give us a call, and we'll do the best we can with it. And maybe we can contact Washington County and get the vehicle stopped and checked.
You know, Glenn, he knows that I call in for everything, even his cattle being in the wrong pasture.
But you didn't that day.
There's a great probability that what was in those boxes wasn't what he was trying to sell you.
Oh, it had factory labels on it.
Yeah, yeah, I know. They do that. It looks real pretty. But all the time, it's filled with bricks or whatever else. But apparently, you just walked away from him. So that's really what we ought to do. But, you know, a phone call would help. Even after the fact, to know that that is occurring, it lets us know that there's a placement we need to keep an eye on.
In a case like that, I'd just like to share with you, anyone walking up to you, whether it's to sell you something, you don't know them, walk away. Walk away because...
He was still sitting in his car. He didn't get out of his car. He's poking over his window to look in. And that's the way he worked.
For your own personal safety. You know, walk away. You don't know them, walk away. And then report it, as the chief advised you. Once you call it in, they may be gone from this location. But with the direction of travel, we can alert everyone else down that roadway. So they can be contacted, but we really need everyone to help in doing that. Sorry?
Next one. Ms. Carter, do you have a question or comment? Okay, just checking. Lincoln Cattings.
Hi, I'm Lincoln Cattings. I've lived in Purview for a long time. My question is kind of a twofold question, really. I really want to know, number one, were all the murders drug-related, first of all? And my second question is about citizens arming themselves. Where's the line stop when I carry my gun? Okay, because I carry my gun. You know, it's not going to happen, you know? I just want to know about that.
Okay, I'll answer that.
Thank you.
Three out of the four are drug-related. The fourth one's over a girl. And can you carry a gun if you have a CHL? As long as it's concealed, you can carry your gun. If you've got a rifle, you will have to have it.
And what about...
But I don't recommend it.
What about the new law saying that you can carry? Say, look, I live in Waller County and I work in Fort Ben County. Can I carry a pistol in my truck between Waller County and Fort Ben County without having a concealed handgun license?
Yes, you can. That was an old law called... It was known as the traveling exception. But the problem we ran into with that was sometimes you'd have a smart aleck policeman, and they didn't care about the traveling exception. And the legislature clarified that a few years ago. And as long as you keep your gun in your car and it's concealed, you don't need a concealed handgun license. But you need to... It needs to be in your home or in your car or directly going from your car to your house or from your house to your car. And make sure you keep it concealed during that period of time.
Just want to know about... Last part of this is about suppose someone breaks into your house. You've got a lot of older people in the community around Purview. I don't know how many have guns. But they break into your house, when can you shoot them? There's no playing around, you know?
Well, I'm going to give you the answer. If somebody's breaking into my house, they're getting shot.
Yeah, I know. That's what I'm saying. But can you shoot them? Can you shoot them on the front porch at the way they come to the front door?
If they're breaking in your house?
Yeah.
If they're breaking in my house, I'm going to shoot them. No matter where they are.
Okay.
But be reasonable.
If they're not a guest.
That's what, when the jury is second-guessing you and the grand jury is second-guessing you, they're going to want to make sure that you behaved in a reasonable manner.
Right.
So reasonable under stress, but reasonable. Don't shoot somebody and drag them in your front door.
But you can't shoot them, though, right? Majority of this community is over fifty years of age.
Yes, we are.
Okay, and they can't defend themselves by fistfight.
That's right.
Okay, and up until just recently, you're... What's your name again, sir?
Larry.
You know, up until just recently, we haven't had the manpower in Purview to patrol the streets. Okay, I don't want to get into the political side of it yet because I haven't met the mayor yet. But we have to have some changes in a different direction, not among you gentlemen and madam. Okay, my last question is this one. When you were down on officers, was there any kind of thing where you could get with the university police so they could patrol Purview or the sheriff's department so they could patrol Purview while you were down with one or two police officers?
You did work with Chief Stevens. She helped us patrol the areas adjacent to the university. And so there... Let me say this, that there is a high degree of cooperation with law enforcement in Waller County. And so there's an ever... There's a need. I have not found any instance where somebody hadn't been willing to help. So there was a lot of cooperation going on.
I'm just saying, I just... I haven't seen a patrol car on my street in a long time. That's not anybody's fault but my own, but I'm on my street, so... I'm just asking the question to find out.
Let me say something, guys. I've been a police officer for a long time.
That's fair.
It's all about resources, and resources come from money, okay? And when I say resources, it's about how many police officers you can put on the street, how much equipment you can give those police officers to do a job. There's not a cop alive that I know that don't want to catch a bad guy or keep people safe. We all have families and friends in these communities. And so I think, you know, we need to concentrate on figuring out how to get more resources, not just for the chief's community or the university. I've got, on any given day, eighty-five hundred people on that campus with twenty officers. We need to start thinking in terms of shifts because, you know, I don't know how many officers you have in the city of Purview now. I think it's five. When you divide those officers between three shifts, twenty-four hours a day, vacations and times off, because they have families also that they have to be with, you're not talking about a lot of people covering your city. And I don't know what your census is for your cities, but I know you've got a lot of students here who are not necessarily on a lease, so it's hard to count them because you may have one kid moving into an apartment, and then he moves five others. And so your population grows tremendously when school's in session. And so, you know, crime's going to occur wherever we're not. All right, and so I want you guys to think in terms of that. And I think everybody on this panel has touched on it earlier about we need you guys to be eyes and ears. If it means citizens on patrol, if it means, you know, calling us and getting us out there, there's not a cop that I know that doesn't want to catch a crook. Okay? So let's concentrate on resources, you know, for the city of Purview, for me, I think for the sheriff, and for the chief.
I'd like to echo that with the fact that, as I said, I've been here a very short time, but in that time, I have developed programs here in your council department. This council department precinct three does set... Purview does sit directly in the middle of this precinct. And there's no reason why there should not be enforcement activities from that department. So it has been developed, have recruited officers, have developed a schedule where you will start seeing precinct three council's office in your area. I can assure you of that. Some of them are here tonight, and you will start seeing a whole lot more of them because, as you mentioned, resources, it does take money. These officers are here on a volunteer basis. But I have developed a schedule that's going to have an officer here on this street seven days a week. And I intend to make sure that there is patrol here because it comes with not being reactive but proactive to a situation. And what we're experiencing here, all too often in law enforcement, we're reactive. So it develops a problem when that happens. We have to be proactive to get out ahead of that curve to determine what's going to happen before it does. So I'm talking preventative patrol. And you're going to see a lot more of that in the next few weeks and months coming.
Chief Johnson? I think since we're talking about PV and I think hearing from, whether it's resources or plans, you know, so we can pick up on and see how they can interlock and assist.
I have to say this, that over the last year or so, our council's been, I think, aggressively looking at how we can increase resources. I understand that there is a... It's not an infinite amount of resources available. And so we're trying to... We're trying to reassess what we're doing and making sure we're being as efficient as we can with the resources we have. And that, sometimes in redevelopment, that takes time. And so we're doing those things with the resources that are available. But we're constantly reevaluating what we have. Do we have what I would like to have? No. But I don't think there's anybody sitting up here that would tell you they have all the resources that they would like to have. But we're trying to do the best we can with what we do now. But I will say that over the last year, our council has been responsive to the things that I've put forth as asking for additional resources, understanding that there are budgetary constraints. But we still have to continue to look at that and understand as our community grows, when we're considering anything that impacts our growth, we also have to consider how many cops it's going to take to police that when we build a new, whatever it is. Anything else that comes, it takes resources to address that. The gentleman said he had to send a police car on his street. I take that to say maybe that's not bad things happening there, so maybe we hadn't had to go there, you know? And so we try to concentrate on those areas where we know that things are happening. But we have had limited resources for, up until just recently, we had myself and three officers for twenty-four hours, seven days a week. And while I'm talking, let me just compliment the officers that you have here at Purview. They have been dedicated and committed to doing the best they can with what's been available. And so we're in that rebuilding state. Things are getting better, but it's a work in progress.
I remember when I came here about three years ago, we had quite a few reserve officers supplementing the paid officers. Is that something we can get back to? Because we don't have any reserves.
We are looking at that again. Matter of fact, we're in the process of interviewing some of the officers that are, have applied, have asked for reserve status. There's something that we're looking at. But I believe that as a city police department, we have to rely on full-time paid officers. The reserves are volunteers. That's why they're called reserves, the extras. And so, but we are trying to build up our reserve. And so, but, but we are trying to build up our, our reserve, uh, complement, but right now, we've been concentrating on hiring full-time staff.
Good stuff. And, well, while we're on that, a question for the chief?
Well, just kind of a, a response, if I could, uh, for those who don't know me, my name is James Larry. And, um, I've, I've been, uh, kind of almost a thorn in, in Chief Johnson's side since he's gotten here, because public safety has been and number one issue in the city of Prairie View for a while. And as you've all, first of all, I wanna back up and say thank you all for showing up and putting in our city, and, uh, and, uh, participating with us and engaging with us, and actually taking out of your time to actually show us that you care about who we are as a city and providing your services to us. I, I do, I do appreciate that, first of all, but, back to what I was saying, you've all, at some point have touched on it, that it's about the resources of what we have and what we don't have. And I've been a thorn in Chief Johnson's side, because as I've always said, I've said it many times, I've put it in the newspaper, I've said it in the firm's city council, I've said it at commissioners' court. Our city has been mismanaged by Mayor Jackson, and our resources.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Is there a question? This is law enforcement, no, no. You hold up, hold on. This is a law enforcement forum, we don't want to get into that.
I'm getting to that, I'm getting to that.
Okay, come on, Mr. Larry.
And so, what we've asked, as the district attorney, since he's here, that we've, I've asked several times, that we have a, a, an investigation of our city and the potential corruption within our police department.
Okay, Mr. Larry, I'm gonna have to go to the next one, you're two minutes. Okay. Is it James, uh, am I saying this right, Vic, Vicom? Okay, so we got you, okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Vicom. No, that's okay, we, we got you.
I mean, I mean, I don't wanna, it's kinda feedback, but, uh, there's corruption everywhere, like the man was saying, that's gonna happen. That's, that's, that's true. They're human, regardless, at the end of the day, hopefully, the agenda and integrity is to save, I mean, to, to serve the community and whatnot, and the whole police kinda character, but at the end of the day, that, that's life, that's gonna happen, no matter where you're at. And one thing I do wanna address, like what, what the man was saying, but that's a shame that some of us, not only the elders, but some of us do have to be concealed. Not because of, of, of any violence or, or potential harmful, because of the fact that they're, they're scared, they're paranoid, but simply because of these things are happening. And one thing I would like to say, that these murders are happening, these are not just, just gang murders or just, just murders, it's random, they are random murders. They happen from just, in the moment, that could have been changed. All of those murders could have been, should not have happened. It was went about the wrong way, from, from simple arguments escalating. So, that's one thing I would like to say, that you can't, you can't just judge it off of just, just these murders. Yeah, that's happening, they need to do better, but these, these are all random, random actions have been happening. But again, they do have to kinda increase within that, that student housing, like she said, like the chief explained, like people will come here and they're, they're piggybacking their role. That's, that's gonna happen. So, so you gotta, you gotta kinda, like he said, employ, get them employees, get them people on the streets to patrol and, and let them, let them kinda do their job. It's like, as a community, I know one thing we lack, we, we don't speak up, we don't, we don't really seek the law enforcement for a lot of problems.
Let me ask you a question as a, as a recent graduate of grad school. Do you think if the students had an anonymous tip line to report the drug stuff that's going on there, would they use it? In my day, we did, we had it and we used it, and we had this, but I mean, just, just give me a thought, what do you think?
A thought would be, uh, modern day, I, I don't, I don't think they will. You, you have some students that, that are gonna report crimes if, if they're, if they're involved, but, but most of them won't, just because of the, the modern mentality, the modern, the way they've been, been nurtured, been taught lately, like, you, you're not gonna, you don't wanna snitch. You don't, you don't speak to law enforcement.
Anonymous means they don't know you call.
Most definitely, but regardless, it's just that the thought of knowing that, that that's happening. Like, you gotta think, a lot of people, a lot of people have these thoughts toward the law enforcement, either because they, they've heard, they've been natured this way, or because they had a bad experience. So, a lot of people that's had a bad experience with law enforcement, it's, it's gonna stick with them regardless of what it may be.
So, community policing, getting to know the police officers and that sort of thing, can help with some of that situation. Let me, let me move the agenda, if you don't mind, uh, councilman, sure, you got it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Uh, good evening, my name is John Delanda, for those who don't know me, I sit on the Prairie View City Council. And, uh, aside of that, that's neither here nor there, I've, I've been here twenty-seven, I've been here twenty-seven years, this is my home. And, you know, the last ten months, four murders, before that, I don't know if there have been four murders in my first twenty-six years of life here in Prairie View. But my question is, it's not like the crime is spilling out all over Prairie View. There are pinpointed areas in the city of Prairie View where the, the crime is the same situation. So, for us as citizens, and me as an elected official, how do we hold those people who are responsible for those selected areas accountable for the, for the actions that are going on there in their establishment? Because at the end of the day, like he said, these aren't like gang crimes where people are just hanging out all day and people are getting shot. These are impulse crimes, you know, no great police officer would, would have been able to avoid these murders. And, and that's my honest opinion, and I, I honestly believe, as a councilman, since Chief Johnson's been here, we've done everything in our power and in our financial budget to give him everything he's asked for to be successful. You know, and there's gonna, of course, there's gonna come a point in time where Chief Johnson, we're gonna hold you accountable. He's gonna say, hey, we've given you everything you asked for, we're gonna need to see some results. But at the same time, those, those apartment owners, they need to be held accountable for not being present at their apartment complexes. So, how do we hold them accountable, or how do us as a whole hold them accountable for that?
We, we, we've been meeting with the property owners in those particular areas, and one, one of the, the, uh, objectives of that is to get some consensus, to get them working together, to help everybody understand that it, it's not something, a problem that law enforcement singularly can, uh, can solve, can address. And, and I will tell you, as your community grows, uh, you're gonna have crime. That's just a fact of life. But, but we've been working with those property owners, trying to get all of them at the table, so we're all dealing with the same thing, moving in the same direction, helping them to understand that they do have some responsibility for what occurs on their property. And to some degree, they have been responsive, some have not, but we're still working on that. But yeah, we, we understand that, that they have some responsibility there, and we've been reaching out to them and asking for their help and assistance, and giving them some, some, uh, input on ways that they can help us and that we can work together. So, it, it, that is a work in progress.
So, at, I'm sorry, so at what point do we start waiting on them to, to make something happen, to make something happen on their own? Because obviously, you know, I, I apply, you know, three sides, three sides apartments, because councilwoman Herndon knows every person that goes in and out of those apartments. You know, and so, at some point, we have to start waiting on them to, to, okay, we're gonna start complying, how do you start enforcing compliance?
There, there, there is, uh, I think there's some things that you can do, uh, the, uh, an ordinance, which is being looked at at this time, what, what type of ordinances are appropriate for those to require security, require cameras, require all sorts of things. So, a lot of that, the whole gamut is being looked at to determine what's the best approach to that, to make sure that those that are, that have, uh, property, that, that they're responsible property owners. And, and so, that, you know, that it is something that has, will take a little time, but I think there are some things that from a, a city perspective that can be done. Uh, uh, as I said, it's for the enforcing ordinances and those types of things, but also helping them to understand that, that, you know, they have some responsibility to the people that, that are renting from them to ensure their safety.
Uh, chief, in, in picking up on that point, there was something that actually happened prior to you coming, in fairness. Uh, the constable's office did a drug bust at, is it Phillips Place, am I saying that right? Where the guy was shot in the head and it was lit on fire? That location, nine, ten months prior to that shooting, it was all over the paper. And again, this was prior to you, uh, in, in fairness, but I think what the councilman's saying is, when these things happen, something should be done before that murder, and again, it happened before you. I know you say the, the council or whatever's looking at ordinances or what have you, but there was, your department, again, before you, made arrests at that facility. And as I recall, the gentleman who was killed was involved in that arrest. Evidently, he wasn't in jail. So, one of the, the, the things that I would like to shift to our district attorney, if we would, is that gentleman, there were two other guys who, I think in the same complex, were also arrested, and then wound up coming out and moving across the field on the other side of St. Francis Cecy Church. So, uh, Mr. Mathis, district attorney, are you getting what you need? Cause if, if our officers locally arrest them, are you getting what you need so they're not back out on the streets? Cause that's what I'm seeing, and that's just in the last three years I've been back. I don't just live here, I'm out, you know, I knock on people's doors, I visit, so, and, and we see these folks. So, for you all to arrest them, even the Prairie View P D, wha, how are they getting out?
Well, I'm gonna, this is a chance to give you my take.
Please.
If I can do that.
Yes, sir.
I'm a lawyer, and lawyers like to talk, so you just make the shut up.
Nope, nope, uh-uh.
Uh, is Garrett here? Where's Garrett? Garrett's in the back, y'all don't know Garrett, he's one of your administrators at your police department. And last two Wednesdays ago, when this happened, first of all, I enjoy working with chief, uh, you and I have a great working relationship, uh, Chief Stevens and I as well. In fact, I, uh, got to vote that she would be the one that would get hired over here, so that was fun, I appreciated that. But, uh, what I see is there's several levels going on here. I'm gonna give you the good news first. The good news is that these things that have recently happened in Prairie View, um, are not, uh, really being committed by the students. It's not crimes that are being committed by the people, the good people of the city of Prairie View. And Prairie View, much like the rest of Waller County, finds itself in a period of major transition. We are transitioning from a rural sleepy community to a community as a whole that is being targeted by the metropolitan area in good ways and bad ways. Uh, we're being targeted in good ways because we have abundant land, we have abundant resources, and that means money. And developers wanna come here. Uh, the way that we are being targeted in a negative way, especially the city of Prairie View, is you have those students with those student loans and that discretionary funds, and there's this simple thing called supply and demand. There is supply of cash here, uh, there are students that are affluent, that have TVs, that have cars, that have cash to spend. And so, whenever you have, and they're naive, and so, whenever you have that, you have an element that's gonna target them. Uh, secondly, you have students, and there's this little thing called marijuana, and college students smoke that once in a while. And that's not just in Prairie View technically. Uh, so you have those dealers that are coming here because there's a market, and that's a market that would be in any college town. Uh, the last two, uh, actually, all three of these murders, uh, pretty much involve drug dealers from out of town, Houston or Dallas. Uh, in fact, one of them, we had, uh, two Russian guys from California that came here to do a drug deal. Uh, and unfortunately for them, the drug dealer in Prairie View was a little faster, smarter, and tougher than they were. Uh, and so, they got the best of one of them. So, that's the good news, that it's not the citizens of Prairie View or necessarily the college students that are causing it. I ask about Garrett, because, uh, that morning of the murders, and I think you'll remember, he called me, I was sitting at my desk, and he called me, and he told me about probably the worst sexual assault of a child case I've had in nine years, that he was trying to work on. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
And it will make you throw up when you find out the details. Um, and he's trying to handle serious cases like that, you're trying to patrol the streets, you're trying to write tickets, you're trying to catch people driving while intoxicated, and he's tried to, literally, in nine years I've been district attorney, that's the worst sex case I've ever heard. Um, and we're working on it together right now. Um, and then he has things like this, you've got drug dealers coming from out of state, out of county, to do their business here. And so, coming back to, I think, what the bottom line is, we do need to expect more out of our property owners. Uh, you have a city attorney that you could talk to about what the city can do or can't do. Offer some free living space to police officers who live in large apartment complexes. You know, they do that in Houston all the time. Um, make demands of apartment complexes that they do provide security. Uh, where the city can afford to invest more money in the police department, they definitely need to do that. Uh, and that's just not the city of Prairie View. Uh, years ago, the first couple of years I was district attorney, the city of Brookshire was on a downward spiral. Uh, the council was fighting, there was an ineffective police chief, and finally, city council came on board, got a good police chief, got, uh, to the point where they quit their fighting enough that they could actually work with the police department and support the police department. And the city of Brookshire has done a complete one-hundred-and-eighty degree turnaround. Uh, it was so bad that we used to joke that our local Texas Ranger was the assistant chief of police in the city of Brookshire. Because he was down there every two weeks for something. And knock on wood, the city of Brookshire's doing great. So, coming back to resources, the city needs to give this man what he needs within their budget to do a good job. Because Chris Garrett should not have to be investigating serious cases like that and working with my office, and then worrying about speeding tickets five minutes later. Those are highly skilled investigative cases that need somebody with skills, time, and resources to devote to those things. We're getting ready to, uh, my first assistant and I are getting ready to, uh, try another case that's out of the city of Prairie View that happened a couple of years ago. It was a complete stranger danger rape, and y'all probably remember it, lady was home alone, she had, uh, her skilled caregiver there with her. The guy busts in the house, does a sexual assault, uh, it's a thing nightmares are made of. But then again, in that respect, you're talking about somebody that's not from Prairie View coming and perpetrating a crime here. You got a sleepy little community, and we need to be aware. The other thing, you were talking about what people can do on CDs, this is a built-in TV station right here. It's got video capability, it's got cameras, what you should have done, if you would have had time, whip this out, take a picture of the car and the license plate.
The problem with that is, I sound so bad, I can't even use my camera on the phone.
Okay, well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not picking on you, we're talking about general things here. You know, this is amazing tool that we all have. And the other thing, uh, for the first time, last Friday, I actually did a patrol of the city of Prairie View. Uh, since these murders happened, I've been having my investigators do random patrols of Prairie View, and you do have a sleepy community, uh, that is a major community. Um, but like I said, you have to have resources, you have to support this man or whoever's in his position with what he needs. Uh, and we all work together, and I have to echo that this group of people right here has an excellent working relationship with each other and my office, as far as what I'm able to see. So, don't despair, but we've gotta be smart, we've gotta prepare for what's coming to this county and this city, and we've all gotta do our part to be involved. So, good news and bad news.
Well, you, you mentioned something, uh, Wednesday morning at county commissioners' court, about the additional funds and then doing part-time, if you could share that thought on what you.
Well, one of the things that, that I'm trying to do, uh, that will benefit Prairie View and the rest of the towns, is we're adding additional investigators in my office. And one of the things that we'll be focusing on, starting in the city of Prairie View because of this issue, is we're gonna be spending extra time in the city of Prairie View doing drug interdiction. Uh, and I hired the first one today, uh, so you're gonna see people pulling over cars in your city. Uh, and the two investigators I have now are, are big chubby white boys like me. And, uh, if you see them riding down the streets in your town, uh, in a white Explorer or a silver Explorer, they'll have a decal that says district attorney on the side. Y'all wave at them, flag them down. The first day I sent J R out to patrol in Prairie View, uh, was after I started reading some of the social media comments from the cit, from the students here at the university, and reading that and thinking about when I was in college, you know, I've, I've got citizen, uh, students putting on social media, they're scared to go out of their apartment. They go to the university, they come back and they stay inside. It shouldn't be that way. And so, when J R started his patrolling, one of the first things he did was talk to some of the students. The students told him where the drugs are, where the popular apartment complexes are. The students told him where the drugs are, where the popular apartment complexes are, where all the drugs are sold, and where the place to go to party is. Those, the students know what's going on in this town and on this campus. And if we engage them, if we make them comfortable, like Chief Stevens was talking about, where they know that there's this hotline, it's gonna take all of us working together, but we can do it. And I know we can do it because the city of Brookshire did it.
Absolutely. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, the gentleman on the door with the hat, you have your hand up.
My name's Josh Rush, I'm an HSE specialist. I work Goldfield, I've been overseas. I've been here 29 years. Sheriff Smith knows me very well, my family live in Pine Island, from about a mile from that murder. I'll tell you right now, I'm a San Houston graduate, and I believe in 100% of that hotline. It, like he said, they won't snitch BS, that's bull crap in 100%, because I'll tell you right now, 45 is the biggest drug route, and I-10 is the biggest drug route in the state of Texas. I'll tell you right now, I've been in, I've been in, I've been in Walker County Sheriff's Department's cars, I've been in Huntsville, I've been in Huntsville's cars, and we pulled over, and we've got canine dogs, and we've pulled over multiple, multiple cases, is because somebody saw a car and they were educated about what to look for, what to look for. And that's the biggest thing, like he said. Them students, I'm a graduate, I'm a 2011 graduate of San Houston. I'll tell you exactly where them drugs come from in San Houston, and Huntsville, Walker County, anywhere. I'll tell you right now, Pine Island Road's the biggest drug place in Walker, Waller County, I promise you that right now. I see it every day. Guess who I call? I call him. Guess what he's quoted over, not him, not personally, but dispatch? PV has one cop at night.
That's right.
I'll tell you right now. Any statistical data will show you that crime happens at night. Most of crime in the state of Texas happens at night. You go to the border, I just went down there in Laredo, I work on drilling rigs. Guess what? Who I pull up? There's four guys with AK-47s. Guess what they're protecting? They're protecting the assets of that drilling contractor. Guess what? At night. They don't have to do it during the day, you can see 'em. Thing is, it's at night. I don't believe that one cop should be at one patrol. That's my take.
Thank you.
I'll tell you that right quick, I'm sorry to be that way.
Yeah, listen, listen.
I appreciated the overview that District Attorney Matthew Davis and all the comments. Uh, we discovered in my neighborhood, a few months ago, that there were transactions at the end of the street where it was dark at night. And fortunately, I was able to talk with Chief Johnson, and I said, "We need more lighting here." And if you've noticed, at the end of Smith Street, there's a big light down there, and they don't assemble there anymore for transactions.
They don't wanna be seen.
So, uh, my suggestion is that we need to canvass the city to see where the dark areas are, and put some more lights there if we can afford to do that.
Yes, sir, this gentleman had his hand out.
Okay, I'm Stephen Douglas, I'm one of the owner, um, at Brookside. But, um, a few minutes ago, I heard, um, one of the council members mention that, uh, we should, uh, they should all, all, hold us accountable. Um, it means that, um, if you're gonna hold us accountable for crime and violence, you will have to hold other citizens, um, accountable for crime and violence in other areas. Um, this is not a Brookside problem, this is a Prairie, Prairie View area problem. Um, so, um, the criminal will find the weakest link to infiltrate. And other, as of such, um, Brookside is a place right now. Uh, what we need to do, we need to work as a team to, um, get this thing together, uh, to allow all these, um, crimes and crime and violence in, with, not only at Brookside, but all, everywhere in Prairie View. So, um, to be under some kind of control. So, um, that's what I have to say.
Great. Now, we don't wanna leave that. Uh, someone made a suggestion about, like, a police substation or apartment being made aware for police to come through. Brookside's got maybe a couple of vacancies? Okay? Is that something you can take back to your fellow owners and see about getting a place? Cause if we don't put... Yes, ma'am. Ms. Davis, Ms. Davis, she's next anyway. Perfect. No, no, she's on the list to be next.
I'm on the list as well.
Right. Ms. Davis in Brookside, and then Mr. Mosley. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, everybody. My name is Karen Davis, and I'm also a Brookside owner. And I wanna address the city council member, and also, I just wanna say thank you for everybody coming out. And as far as a responsible owner, one thing that, um, Brookside owners did, probably like a week ago, because when, when that second murder happened at Brookside, at least that I'm aware of, our concern was, what can we do? And we, what we did, we met last Saturday several of the owners, and we started coming out with a gang plan of what we could do ourselves, and not just relying on, you know, the police chief or the mayor, et cetera. So one of the things that we talked about was a homeowners association. Because one thing that you may not know, a lot of those units are individually owned. So, a lot of us don't even know who we are, we don't have the numbers, we don't even know anything about each other. And normally, you would have a homeowners association when you first start. So that's one of the things that we talked about. So we wouldn't put it all on, you know, the city officials or the police chief. But the thing also is that, when he was talking about as far as the community, I really think that there should be like a task force, and maybe it shouldn't be just police, it shouldn't be just community, but police, community, students, Prairie, um, officials, et cetera. Because I have a personal, I guess, I guess, bond to Prairie View. I'm not just an investor, I'm a Prairie View alum, and also I have family here. And my family's been here over, what, 50 years? So it's not like I just came here for the sake of coming here. I came because I have a vested interest into Prairie View. And so I want a change, but I actually want to see something happen because the, I guess, last year, before the two murders happened at Brookside, I remember a young lady with her two kids came, and she was concerned about the crime. And then you started seeing more and more with the crime. I know it's resources, I know, you know, there's other items, but I think, uh, there's frustration. There's frustration from owners, there's frustration from the citizens. So, I want, I guess, after this, if there's some kind of way, I'm, I'm willing to be, uh, whatever, you know, this task force is. But we wanna change, we just don't want this meeting to be, everybody voice their opinion and say, "This is what's wrong." I think you have a lot of people here, cause we finally want something to change. So those are my comments.
So, as I understand it, the Brookside people are looking to get together, and then you get with Chief Johnson and whoever else.
Mr. Douglas and I have already, already had a conversation about, about, he's been very, one of the ones that have been very responsive and, and helpful with us. And he told me about the meeting that they're on his head, and we're working together to try to get, when they meet, to where I can be, meet with them, and we'll, so we're, we're working together.
Okay, uh, Steve, Chief Stevens here.
I was gonna say, I'm glad to see some of the owners, apartment owners are here. One of the things that we do on campus, they're privately owned apartments on campus, is they, they, we, we allow the privately owned, um, apartment complexes to put power in their leases, okay? And that gives me power. Their kids can't be hanging out in the parking lots of those apartment complexes, um, curfews and things of that nature. And I would like you guys to kinda consider some of those things, that way, as the police, as few as there are, when they're patrolling, if they see people hanging out or loitering in the parking lots, um, violating curfews, and get just some reason to stop and identify people, or run them off. Kids need structure, okay? Um, and so, I don't know, I know that has to be a part of your leasing agreement, and so, and that's a question, I guess, that I'm asking. Are there rules in your leasing agreements with these tenants about being out, hanging out?
Yes. Okay. Yeah, I can address that. As far as for my unit, I definitely enforce the lease, as far as, you know, if there's people in there and there shouldn't be there. You know, they know the rules, but like I said, since I just own, like, one unit, and you have another person who owns another, what happens is not everybody's enforcing their lease. And so, that's why, um, we're trying to have a homeowners association, because you can have the other homeowners who are actually holding each other accountable. One thing I did say as well, as far as the, the crime there, actually, there was a robbery at my unit, there was a robbery next to my unit before, so I've actually, you know, had to be involved in there. And the students that live there, I found out after the, the murders, that they were telling me that they have random shootings over there in the nighttime. So, the whole thing about coming in, coming out, I'm concerned about their safety, their parents are concerned about their safety, and also, I think there should be something as well, as far as, I don't know what the communication was that day on the murder, but as you see, I guess, around the country, as soon as something happens, is there, you know, an instant call around the community and an instant call to the university? I don't know. How is that? What happened that day? Can you, I guess, expound on that? As far as what happened?
As soon as we got information and were able to determine that it involved, possibly involved students, we, we put out a, a warning, um, probably about four o'clock. That was as soon as we could get it out, because we had to sort through what was going on out there and find out, first of all, if it involved any kids, um, that were our students. We have federal requirements to do that, to notify people in, in what's called a timely warning. Um, and so we did put the information out. Now, that doesn't, that information only goes out to people who are considered students or parents of students who have enrolled in, in what we call our, um, I guess it's that email alert system, and it will go out their phones. You wouldn't get it if you're not, you know, signed up to that on our, um, on our online information.
Well, how would we get that similar information to residents? Cause I understand somebody was running around for a while before, well, I guess before he turned himself in. But, but we didn't know he was running around. How, robo calls or something?
Again, one of those things where sometimes it takes a minute, and it did take a little while to identify and understand who it was we were looking for. Uh, in a situation like that, in, in any type of, particularly in a homicide, it's a, usually a pretty chaotic scene, and one of the first things you have to do is get that scene under control, so that you don't lose evidence, you try to identify possible witnesses. And, and in a, in a city like this, particularly with so many students, they're very mobile. So you, you're trying to do those things ver, very quickly, some things that have to be done, uh, and if they're not done timely, uh, it, you, you begin to lose evidence and lose witnesses, and stories begin to change. And also, so that, it takes a while to get all of that under control. And, and so it did take a while to understand who it was we were looking, we got many different stories from a lot of different people about what happened and who did it and who didn't. So it takes a minute to sort through all of that. But to try to get that information out as quickly a, as, as we can, uh, to, 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 you know, to the rest, we, I sent out, uh, press releases to the news stations and those types of things, we sent out press releases, try to get that information out on the TV station and those sorts of things.
Gotcha. Karen Davis next, look, Mr. Mosley, you're next.
Thank you, David. Appreciate it. And I guess because I'm friends of James Larry, that, uh, as well as most of the people in here, that you're coordinating. But you know, my thing is, we might as well hold hands and say kumbaya, cause we still have not touched the issues that are going on in this city. For instance, Dooley Street, everybody in here knew what was going on on Dooley Street. It was across the street from St. Francis Church. So everybody, anytime you went to the church, they would tell you what was going on on Dooley Street. They sold dope on Dooley Street for probably 10-plus years, and everybody in this community knew it. There's a dope dealer that's still in this town that lived on, Echoes got shot twice, moved back into the same apartments, continued to sell dope, and in some way the city now still selling drugs. And, and the police and everybody else knows that. Can somebody please tell me how a man calls 911 twice and still dies, cause nobody ever responded to his call? And we're talking about, this is the law enforcement workshop, explain that. And we had a, a property owner talking about robberies and shootouts, we're not even addressing those issues. All we're talking about is a farm murder. And it's a shame, I like to ask the panel, how many times outside of your duties have you come to visit at Prairie View? And I let you think about that question. My other question is, how long are we gonna, uh, continue to acquiesce and continue to let these things go on, and you guys do nothing about what's going on in Prairie View? District Attorney, you're from this community. How many times have you come to Prairie View? We've been getting kicked to the side and, and avoided, and we're the largest employer of the county, and got the least of all the resources. And we wanna come in today, and, and everybody's talking about, uh, what we're gonna do to work together, we're gonna all leave here and go to our corners when we leave here. And nothing's gonna, and nothing's going to be done. We'll have another murder, we'll have, um, some more robbery. That guy mentioned will continue to sell drugs in the city of Prairie View at various locations. I know, for instance, when this young lady built this place across the street, her and the police officer went across the street over here and told the guy to move by five o'clock, said, "Let's dope someplace else," cause she was building that spot over here. And he, by five o'clock, he was moving, took residence up someplace else. But these things continue to go on, and we continue to act like we don't see them. This is 2015, and we still continue to be a punchline in Waller County.
Let me stand up on this. Because, first of all, I live on Dooley Street. I hear all the noise, all the parties, and I have to jump in my patrol car and go shut it down at two and three o'clock in the morning. But let me say this. Dr. King said, "We must learn to live together as brothers, or we will perish together as fools." I had a town hall meeting here, and my town hall meeting was, "Community, I need you to be my eyes and ears." How many of you was here? Those of you that are here, we even implemented a plaque that said, "We patrol in this area." Since I've been here, since I've been the constable, I've been very aggressive, very aggressive. You know why I've been aggressive? Cause 23 years of my life, I ran a homeless shelter, and drugs were sold in, in the area right when we started setting up. And I told my guys, "We not gonna let them sell drug in our community. All of y'all know who the dope dealers are." And we marched all the way around the city of Houston, punting our drug houses to the police, and we started cleaning it up. It takes you and the community and, and community policing, that's the reason I'm out in the community talking to you. That's the reason why I want you to understand who I am. Some of y'all may know me just being an activist, but you don't know me from my heart, a cleaner of a community. This community can get cleaned up, but we gotta have people being on the same page. We gotta have the mayor, we gotta have the council, we gotta have every police agency on the same page, instead of being hatred toward one another. Getting angry because somebody stopped you and you didn't like it because precinct three stopped you. They speeding on University Drive, going crazy, we don't give tickets if it ain't 10 miles and over. But the problem is, is we as a community, we gotta look at ourselves, don't look at nobody else here. We live here. I live on Dooley. If you count how many people that works on that campus, leave off that campus and go to Houston. We live here, people. This is our community. When you see the drug dealers, tell us. Knock on my door, tell me where they are. I guarantee you, we will clean it up. We not shy about it. We not shy about writing tickets cause people speeding, because of a bad wreck happened on Dooley, they could come inside of my house and kill me and my family. That's what we about here at precinct three. We gotta clean it up. That's when we got this shit, we get, we, we, we locked on with the sheriff, and we had the, one of the first buses over there on Dooley. I don't know everything, but I guarantee you, if the chief worked with me, and the chief sat down with me, and all these guys, we worked together, we can make it happen. Just at the last three, uh, 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 commissioner meeting, we brought in men with over 150 years of experience. My captain, he understand what we need to do. And I guarantee, y'all gonna see it rockin' and rollin' in Prairie View.
Constable, I, I for one, and we mentioned that you weren't here, about the drug bust you organized on Dooley. But I recall too, when you stopped the patrol on University Drive, nine, 10 days later is when that young man left the grocery store and went and stabbed the other one, right in the area where you were patrolling. So, we need to make sure you don't just start, we need to make sure nobody stops you, cause I'm aware of that.
Hey, don't sugarcoat it, don't sugarcoat it. Hold on, don't sugarcoat it. Tell the truth, man. Tell what really happened, don't sugarcoat it, you say it.
Well, we were in a city council meeting here, and I, I told my wife, "It's 30 there, they're patrolling, that's a good thing, just don't get a ticket," right? Well, we were in a council meeting, and unfortunately, at, toward the latter part of the meeting, Mayor Jackson told the constable, "You know, we gonna handle the city. We gonna handle it, don't patrol our city, we, we got it." 10 days later, we had a stabbing, right in the area where he was told to stop patrolling. So, I mean, when we talk about working together, that's, that's what we need to do. And like you said, I was touching on it, but the truth is what it is. I'm sorry, ma'am, you wanted to... So, I mean, when we talk about working together, that's, that's what we need to do. And like you said, I was touching on it, but the truth is what it is. I'm sorry, ma'am, you wanted to-
Yes, I wanted to speak. I wanted to speak behind the district attorney. And the reason I wanted to speak behind the district attorney, uh, attorney, cause I wanted to co-tell some of the points that he made. You made, you brought up the problem and you also during your speech brought up the solution. But I don't know if you were aware of your box solution. Uh, you said that, uh, one of the needs is resources. But in also your speech, you said that in the Prairie View area, there was abundant discretionary money. Remember saying that?
We talking about the commissioners?
No, the students. They're all paying.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You said there was abundant discretionary money. You also said-
I had the most money I ever had when I was in college.
Yeah, but you're still paying it back right now. But, uh, you also made the point that you said students were afraid to go outside. If not, you remember saying that? Now, that's an equation, okay? And through that equation, you can get some resources. I'm gonna show you how to get up, up to $2 million, just on that equation. Discretionary money and fear, okay? Now, what I think is a good idea to solve the problem with the resource, needing the resources is, since the students are afraid, and I don't blame them for being afraid, they could pay a safety and security fee. A safety and security fee of anywhere from $700 to $100 a semester, which is nothing compared to what they probably spent on weed.
Can't do it.
Or Michael Kors purses. Or, uh, not, uh, what you call them shoes?
Let's, let's play your-
Yeah, yeah. So, it's not a big deal. But what that, that can do is, if you're talking about a projection from 8,500 to 12,000 students at some point, uh, you're talking about up to $2 million a year, okay? Y'all got y'all calculating that? Okay. So, if they pay, and even in apartments, uh, where they have a security deposit, get them, add on a security fee. And what that fee will be used to do is generate revenues anywhere from half a million dollars if it's $36 per semester, and I'm thinking $75 to $100 per semester, to $2 million, okay? And put that, those resources in a budget and have, uh, additional, uh, policemen, law enforcement to patrol the areas, and not just patrol the areas, but to begin to develop, uh, relationships. Good, strong, positive relationships with the students and the community. I love, uh, Chief Stevens, cause she does a good job. Uh, she came to my class one time to talk to my students. She probably doesn't remember because I'm dressed so differently. But, uh, I wanted to be here tonight. But anyway, uh, that money can be used for the special crime prevention for Prairie View, but that's $2 million for a year. And that's the solution. So figure out how, it's not a matter of, well, we can't do that. Figure out how to do it. Like I tell my students, no such thing as can't. Figure out how you can do that. I'm sure the students would have no problem if they felt like, number one, law enforcement was really there to protect them. And there was some type of monthly, uh, meeting or town hall meeting where the students were invited or you went to the apartments or, uh, had presence there or whatever. Had the presence more with the students and worked more collaboratively with them. I did research, a national research study, and the research tells us, uh, you can Google it, uh, the name of it is, "Will They Tell Weapons Reporting in a School?" And, uh, they're not gonna tell you. They really not. Now something, there may be one or two who will, who feel comfortable doing that, but the majority of the students that we surveyed in the study said that they wouldn't, even if it was anonymous. So one way to bridge that gap is to develop, figure out a way, and you have to listen to the students on this one, figure out a way to become more collaboratively involved. Find out what it is they need to feel secure and provide that for them with that fee.
Thank you. There, there's a phone, there's a phone number for those of you who want to write it down or put it in your cellphone. I want to put that out there because this is from the county sheriff, I think that was in the, the operations, uh, Roger Snuffy Garrett, W. Okay. Area code 979-826-8282. 979-826-8282, extension 4003. And we need to start using it. Call it, make sure it works. Just, just call. But we need to do something beyond just talking here this evening. What is the most effective way to receive a timely response in writing? It's a, a question. Anyone that want to answer it because you all probably pretty similar?
Probably respond in writing.
In writing to a citizen's request for, let's say they, they, I don't know if they want a response from you in some legal issue, what's, what's the turnaround time?
It depends on what it is.
Okay.
If it's an open records request, some things are open, are gonna require legal advice. So it may take 10 days for an open records request.
Okay.
Um, if it's a simple request, something that we can do, you know, an email, send me an email and I'll get back with them.
Okay. So you got that? I mean, we're able to contact, everybody pretty similar?
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay. How do we start the process for nuisance laws? And I think that's when you get so many calls to the same, and, and again, it might help some of the Brookside people, because if you got a owner whose property would, most of these calls are on chief, I don't know if the RICO Act can kick in, if it's a, a constant drug issue or what?
Nuisance abatement is, is, is a tool that, that we can use as a, it is a, uh, kind of drastic thing to do. Uh, but at the end of the day, if, if there's no cooperation, if there, if there's a pro, a place that is a extreme problem, then that, that is a tool that, that we can use. My preference is to, to continue on the path that we have started on. And I think if we, I, I, I have, you know, I've been, I've been in this business a long time. Uh, the sheriff and I went to the police academy together. I, I, I have found that voluntary compliance is the best solution if you can gain that. Uh, at the end of the day, if you don't get that, then you have to use other, other means to, to do that. Nuisance abatement is one of those tools that I've used in the past. It is an extreme, you know, tool to, to use i- if you have to. I, I don't think we're at that point though. I, I think that, that with the cooperation that we're getting, that we're seeing from the apartment owners, and, and let me tell you this, I, I know that, that the focus has been at Brookside and other places where we've had this, but let me tell you, that, that's not the only place we're having problems. Uh, that, this city is, is, is growing and there's a dynamic here that is increasing with, with the number of students and with the activity. Uh, being where we're located at the, in the, during the course of the day, there's any number of people that are in and out of this community. That don't live here, they're in here for whatever reason. So we're trying to address those issues. And with the resources we have, it is sometimes difficult to concentrate on. See, just knowing about something doesn't mean that I can put people in jail. There, there's requirements, we have to be able to prove it. And so those, those are, and those things take time. Elton, uh, district attorney alluded to it earlier, uh, with what we're trying to get to is get to the point to where I can, uh, have Sergeant Garrett in this instance, do nothing but concentrate on investigations. Because he, he does. Do, wear multiple hats. And so we're trying to, trying to, uh, address that as quickly as we can. Uh, but so, it, th- these issues are, are things that, that we're not, not aware of. It, it's, they do take time.
Sure. Well, I, I heard something from Chief Stevens in terms of, basically, we need to give you guys the meat in the lease agreements to be able to enforce something. When, when we look at, hold on just a second. I, I know, but let me make, let me make one point and you can respond. Well, we've got two white Russians from California staying in an African-American student housing complex here and nobody calls law enforcement. I think whoever owns that property, based on what I'm hearing from the concerned people from Brookside, they need some help from you guys to enforce it with the people who aren't staying on top of their property. And with two murders and it would've been three, except the guy shot him in the head but it went through his mouth. I think we're at a problem where we need some nuisance laws, some ordinances, or we shouldn't be having this meeting.
I, what, what I want to make sure that we understand is that, uh, those conditions that are in the lease are often things that we can't enforce. They, they, they can help us, but, but we can't enforce their lease agreement.
Right, but the nuisance laws-
Let me also make sure that we understand that in the case of the, the, they weren't, they weren't living there. As far as our understanding, they showed up that night. I mean, they hadn't just been there. So it, it's not a case that they have been living there for a number of days or whatever. This thing happened, developed very quickly and as, as most of the time it, it does. And, and in, in that particular instance, that, that particular apartment wasn't even occupied, it was their show apartment. It was, it was the management used that when they showed the apartment to respective new tenants.
Did you find that they had broken in? They were let in?
That there was no forced entry as far as we could, we could-
Okay. Okay. So good stuff. Yes, sir.
Definitely. And only by understanding, I've probably been out here the least amount of time than anybody here on this desk. But I come from Harris County and worked Houston all my career. And what you have here is big city problems coming to a small town. That's what you have. And the reason it's coming here is because there's attraction, just like the DA said. It's supply and demand. There's money here and what we have to do from a proactive point of view is to eliminate that attraction to be here for that money. So there has to be a deterrent. Has to be a deterrent. So far, everything is the benefit of the crooks to come here and sell their drugs, do their illegal acts and so forth. I have been here in the communities, I've been to the stores and there's not a single time I haven't talked to someone here in a store and asked them what's going on in their street. And they've always been able to tell me something. And my follow-up question is, did you call that in? The answer is no. Okay? We have to know that, okay? I have not had a single moment in an Exxon, the Denny's, any of the restaurants where someone I've walked up to and as officers, as officers, our job, when you talk community policing, is we need to talk to you. This man says, "No officers come down his street." But when they do come down the street, do anybody stop and just say hello? That's what needs to happen. Exactly. Exactly. That's my point. When you're doing community policing, that's what it means. I need to communicate with you. I need to stop, you're in your yard, I need to stop and talk to you. I see you in the store, I need to stop and talk to you. I need you to tell me and feel comfortable telling me what's going on. Then we can develop intel. Because these problems that you have, it starts with intel. That's where it starts. You gotta stop it. Why was the guys here? They were here because of drugs. Why did Russian people come here? They came here because of drugs, whatever. The DA said three of the cases were drug related. If they're drug related, they came here for that reason. So the fix to this is to eradicate the reason for them being here. So drug dealers, in my, in my experience, I've spearheaded a number of Zero Towers operations. We got one coming up out here. Now, as the Chief Stevens said, there's a budget, restrictions, yes, we only have four cars. Four. But I can assure you, all four of those cars, and hopefully in cooperation of everyone else on this desk, the night of that operation, and as we do it in random times throughout the remainder of this year, they're gonna know we're there. And we're gonna make it as uncomfortable as possible for that element to stay here. That's what I intend to do. I don't care who you are. You move, you're getting stopped. Crooks do not like light and we're gonna light you up. That's just the bottom line. And this is enforcement. But again, that's reactive, our, our, uh, objectives to do it proactively. I need to get out there before the murder happens. I need to get out there before the confrontation starts. I need that input so that I can get there and stop it before it gets started. And that comes through everybody in this room. That comes through everybody on this panel. We have to do that and that's what's gonna start happening. These officers are gonna be here and they're gonna be out here to protect you. But we need your input and we also are gonna need everybody. If you have a number that you've called, sheriff's office, the university, Waller PD, Prairie View PD, call that number. Call it. Give us information. We pass around intel between departments. So the fact that you called one, you don't have to call all of them. We'll pass that intel around. But I want you to make those calls. You're gonna see us. There will be a difference in presence here very soon, trust me.
Good stuff. Appreciate it. Next one is, can we have police patrolling more frequently in unmarked vehicles? I think that's been answered or touched on to the extent that you, you all can. Uh, police should not have the attitude when you, well, oh, when an officer responds to a call to say, quote unquote, "What do you want now?" Why then would we call regarding needing help or to report a possible crime with that And that was actually from the, for the Prairie View PD, so Chief Johnson, I'll just-
You saying, why would somebody respond to that?
Yeah, they're, when they, when a officer respond, the officer told whoever this person is, quote, "What do you want now?" Like maybe they've called before and, but still-
You know, I, I, I would tell you this, anytime that you have a concern about how officers respond or how you interact with them, call me. We'll, we'll address it. I don't have a problem with that. But I can't address it if I don't know about it. So I, I mean, I can't really address it cause I don't really know the, the details of it.
Sure, and then I don't know who-
But, but I would tell you that, that should not be the response.
Right. And they can reach you through, through the police department number. Okay. Good enough. How many police are, on staff and PV, I, I think you touched that? How many officers do we have, chief?
Five.
Five total? Count yourself?
We have one, and five patrol officers myself, and we have one, uh, opening that we're working to fill at this time.
Okay. Now, now when you say five patrolling yourself, I know a couple of years ago, the city paid for Texas Chiefs of Police Association to kind of do a review of the department. Is that something that's being implemented? I've asked for it, I just get told it's a draft.
That, we're, we're, we're working through that to, to, uh, address those issues that were identified, yeah. That, that has been, uh, a big part of my, what I've been doing since I've been here.
Okay. Um, any other questions from the, yes, sir?
Other question. Um, with only Brookside, there's no, it's not an accident why we hadn't had any problems. But I would encourage all the residents that mainly Brookside, is get to know your neighbors, get to know each other. Even if you have an absentee landlord, get their phone number. So if you see something that they don't know about, give them a call. But I'd also encourage you to talk to Marie Herndon, who's a councilwoman here, but she's also retired principal. She is so in, in, in touch with our residents that they come to talk to her 24 hours a day. And this, and, and that, I, I think, I can honestly say that's why we never had a fight. Drug issue, a murder, uh, now even an assault there. So I think it's gonna take a community, especially with Brookside and with these absentee landlords, you guys are gonna have to touch and reach out and touch these folks and get their numbers and communicate with them and let them know what's going on. They may not know what's going on. And that may help with the problem. And I also know all these folks on this panel, I know they all have open door policies cause I, I've gone and talked to each and every one of them. So, uh, with the, with the sheriff and with, uh, with the campus and with the city and with the constable, whenever we have an issue, they, they let me right on in and we take care of it right away. So I would encourage everyone to, to reach out and talk to these folks and develop relationships with them. So they know that you're there, that you're concerned and they'll respond.
Let me, let me say that Brookside has a unique kind of situation. It's, I think it's about three or four different managers over there. Correct me if I'm wrong, mayor, uh, three or four different owners that's over there. The one of the owners is very corporate. He always, I, in matter of fact, he wrote me a letter and asked me, could we put a substation at Brookside? I mean, he's working, he working us in in every kind of way. And the other two or three, they not cooperating. So, you know, they just let, they, whoever could pay rent over there, that's who they rent to, you know? And, and on top of that, the manager that was at one of them, where the purple building And on top of that, the manager that was at one of them, where the purple building is, she resigned on Friday. So now they don't even have a manager who lives on property anymore. So when you got property owners who come here and just wants to make money, we got to hold these people accountable. They call slum lords to me. They don't care anything about our community. And I think Mayor, both had a meeting a couple of times with these people, and they're not cooperating. They don't want to come to a meeting, sit at the table, talk about what's going on in their properties. That's a problem.
Well, again, with those type of reach-out efforts and nothing in response and them being problems, that's why I think the Newton laws...
Let me say this, I don't entirely agree with you. I think that that might be the case, but we're not at that point. I can't say that because I have not been able to make contact with the majority of the... The ones that we have talked with have at least expressed a desire to have dialogue and talk about how we can make some improvements here. So I'm just looking at it from the standpoint of this. I'm not interested in pointing fingers and who didn't do that. We're gonna work toward solving the problem. And it doesn't help anything for me to talk bad about anybody. We're gonna work with those people that are willing to work with us, and those that don't will deal with that. But I think it's in everybody's best interest sometimes, it's simply because they don't know that there's a problem. And so it's part of our responsibility to reach out to them and make sure they understand how their lack of involvement is impacting everybody. And so until I know that, I'm not gonna tell you that they're being uncooperative. I'm telling you that we're making an effort now to reach out to them. And as we do that, they've been very responsive. We had a meeting yesterday, I guess we met with five or six owners. Everybody said, man, let's work together. So the people that we've been able to contact have not been unresponsive. They're concerned about, you know, how much it's gonna cost. No, they're business people. They're in business to make money. I don't have a problem with that. But it's part of our responsibility to reach out to them, to make sure they understand how they're impacting our city. And so that's part of what we do. And so, you know, my approach is that we're gonna address the problem, and we're gonna address the problem in a positive way. We're gonna treat people fairly. My goal is to solve the problem. But I've been doing this long enough to know, and I'm not gonna sit there and tell you that we can, law enforcement's been in existence for a long time. We still have crime. And so it would be disingenuous for me to tell you that there's any one, 10 things we can do and crime is gonna go away, because that's not gonna happen. This community is growing. You're getting new people here all the time. We just have to be innovative and stay positive on how we're addressing those issues. And our job is to suppress crime to the extent that we can. And we're gonna do that to the best of our ability. We come to work every day for the purpose of serving our community. That's what we do. That's what we do.
Now, what can we do, chief? I mean, in Prairie, as residents, while you're here, what can we do to help those law enforcement actors?
By being responsive, by calling us. You know, you mentioned before about, you know, emails and whatnot. I like phone calls or come to the, I like talking to people. And so that's how we get things solved. But we, law enforcement by itself will not be effective in addressing this issue. It truly does take cooperation and input from the community. And as we reach out, and we have some responsibility, as a gentleman said, for us to reach out, to make that effort, to reach out. And my, so far, what I've seen in this community is that when we've done that, we've got a positive response. And so as we begin to work together, as we get to know each other, and we work more together, more effectively, I think you'll see a change. But it does take time. And I'm not gonna tell you that something's gonna happen next week because that's not true. It will take time for us to work through these issues. And so there's limited resources. But together, there's a lot that we can do together.
And you mentioned ordinances earlier, that would be a city council issue?
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah. There are things that the government can do to look at from an ordinance standpoint. Again, it's one of those things that I think we have to also create a balance, that we don't want to deter business, you know? So there's things that we can do. So we just have to look at it from a positive standpoint. And include, the people that have a stake have to be at the table. And when we have those discussions, we have to have open, honest discussions. But we have to look at it from the standpoint that we're gonna keep moving forward. It does me no good to sit here and bash anybody and talk bad about anybody. That is counterproductive. It just is. And so if we're gonna get better, we're gonna move forward, we have to be forward-thinking. And we have to do that in a positive way. When I first came in, one of the first things I talked to my, to the officers and the people that worked for the Prairie Police Department, is that I wasn't gonna spend any time talking about what it used to be. It didn't. It was a waste of my time. We're gonna put a pin in it today, and we're gonna move forward from today. Because whoever else was here before me did the best they could with what they had. That's it. And whoever comes after me will look back and say, there's some things Johnson maybe could have done, you know? But we have to keep moving forward. And we have to move forward together. And if we do that, we can. We can address these things. One of my mondes is this, our goal ought to be, my goal is, is that the criminals will need to know that they cannot have unfettered access to our streets. They just will not have, they need to know that there is a high probability, when they come to the city of Prairie View, when they come on the campus, when they come to Waller County, there's a high probability they're gonna encounter law enforcement. And I'm not talking about stopping people for, when they're wrong, we'll deal with them. We reemphasize making traffic context. Not from the standpoint of writing tickets, generating revenue, but traffic context generates intelligence. We operate from that. Something, information that we get today might not be, might not come into play till a year from now. But we gather that intel, and we make sure that we know who's associated with who. And they take time. Let me just tell you this, we're talking about drugs and I've run Alcatraz Task Force, I've worked federal undercover agents. It takes time to address those things. It takes resources to do that. And we are working on that, I promise you. There are things that are happening now, that we will address those issues. Some things that are, will be visible, some things that they're not. But we're not sitting around here all day at the donut shop drinking coffee. I mean, our job is to protect the citizens, and I'm telling you that because I take it very seriously. I take it very seriously. We come to work every day to protect the citizens, the people that come here, that live here, that work here. That's what we do.
About to close, ma'am, you've had your hand, let me go over there.
I know, I'm sorry, I'm not signed up on the list because I wasn't gonna speak, but you actually brought up a property I now manage, Phillips Place Apartments. I can't, that whole put a pin and move forward, we're moving forward. I can't address what took on the place then. But when I started managing, I have put security cameras. I have contacted, I've met Officer Garrett out there and Inspector Stoneham and showed him my cameras. This is what I've got, this is what I've got going. Trying to address the whole curfew part, the rules on only these cars should be here at this night. I can actually pull it up on my phone 24 hours a day, see who's parked there. I text the one young man who's there and said, why is there another car there? It's 11 o'clock at night, what are they doing there? So the being active as far as, and I have property in, I do Circle K in Hempstead. I've got a lot of them in Waller too that I do over on Willow Street and Dewey Street. And so, and then I have now these down here. So there is, you know, you do try. But however, when you're talking about making owners and property managers accountable, it becomes difficult when you think something's going on, but I don't think we have the right to take an officer in and say, I know, you know, Circle K, I know a lot of them smoke weed. My rules say no smoking, but I have to actually catch them smoking it. Not only do I have to catch them, and I'd have to have an officer walk in with me every time and go, alright, you know, you can smell it, you can see it, but you can't arrest somebody for what was done. So, you know, it's hard as a property manager to always stay on top of it. The money, I'm gonna address that. When my students get their overpayments, the ones I love are the ones who pay the whole semester up because they don't have that access. And I know they're doing the right, the ones who I know are getting those giant $3,000 and $4,000 checks that aren't paying that, I figure they're probably doing something they shouldn't be doing. And if the university would say, the only ones who get their money, if you're one of the phases, then they get their money, they get paid. But as Brookside and those of us who rent to students, if there was a way that we could say from the campus, this is gonna cover your rent, bring me your lease, and we're gonna make that OP go to your rent for those months, you know, even though we're not university affiliated. If we could get on a list that said, I've been approved, my property has been approved, these buildings at Brookside have been approved, this is how that money's going. And then they don't have that excess of revenues to spend on some of the things they shouldn't be doing. But I did contact some officers and say, this is what's going on, this is what I've got doing. So I'm trying to be a responsible manager.
I think we all appreciate that.
Absolutely.
You know, it makes a difference in that Phillips Place.
Appreciate you showing up.
You know, it's not your grandma's ravioli when I tell you...
Listen, let me give you some teeth, though. You said that you called, I think the constable when you had an issue. You may not be able to make an arrest, but if you have that in your lease, you can evict. Which helps us.
You can evict, but, you know, I think as you're probably well aware, the judicial system makes it very expensive for us to evict based on somebody smoking weed. You know, because especially if they, it's just, it's a very fine line when you're getting into the business end of the people I represent, you know, as the owners of the property. And if you evict everybody who smokes a joint, oh my God, you got nobody living there.
Let me share something with you, though. Brookside evicts for lighting candles. And they constantly have people saying, I wanna move there because they kick somebody out for lighting candles. Or smoking cigarettes. So you might, it's amazing how it actually can work in reverse. When the word gets out, that's a good, safe place to live, and they're on top of it like you are, which is good. You know, like you say, they're going forward. But keep in mind, you may want to get with some of the ones that are working, and there's an apartment owners association that gets together, then maybe you guys can get with the university and see. I don't know what, if anything, you can do, but until you sit down and talk, you'll never know. In winding down, we have our mayor here, and we're in his house. I think it's only fair to bring out Mayor Jackson. Do you have some things you want to say, share?
Well, let me say to everybody, thank you for coming out. I certainly appreciate the forum, I've learned a lot. And I commend those that participated, thank you very much. But we do have a wonderful opportunity to do some great things here in the city of Prairie View. And they're being done. It's not been an idle issue. We've been working behind the scenes and getting stuff done on the ground floor. So we're gonna help make it happen. So thank you for your participation, thank all the folks that came out. And we look forward to working with y'all as we move forward.
Appreciate it. Thank you, ma'am. Mayor Wolf, this is the county forum, we got your chief here.
We've heard enough said, and I promise I won't do it, I know what I do, and that is talk, get excited, talk too much. But again, what we've heard tonight is some valuable information. I look forward to seeing what I believe is a collective effort. Because what I see across those dimes is a team. And I don't think there's that one individual that's suffering that dies that will not support the other. So I believe that it's gonna happen. Again, remember that scripture says, "All things work together for the good of them who, Father Lord, who are called according to his purpose." It was not by accident or coincidence that these murders have occurred to bring such a group together. God bless.
And any other mayors just want to cover the county? Final thoughts from the, you know, our chiefs and law enforcement?
Well, let me, let me say something.
Yes.
Oh, stand up, my constable over there. But I can't raise my voice quite good. Constable Smith, but I think we're keen down the line with that. I do know that unfortunately.
Smith, another mother.
But let me, let me just say this. There, I truly am talking like a politician within reason. Almost everything I've heard in here for the last hour and 40 minutes is correct info. I hate that a couple of gentlemen said what the head of the say and didn't want to listen to the rest of it left. That poor judgment on some people's part, okay? Each one of y'all got a concern, just like we do up here. Chief Johnson couldn't have said it any better. I can assure you, after 36 years, I wake up every morning, still excited to do my job and to go do something. I've told ever pastor that I've ever had at a church, I take my job as a God-given calling, just like they do as a pastor, you know? And we're serious about that with our profession. And 99.9% of officers chewing their crop are that away, okay? But what you see in this building, the first thing that really stuck in my mind this last hour or so is the word pride. And there is a lot of pride, there's a lot of pride. I studied, I did graduate studies on that campus over there for almost three years in the juvenile justice system. I sit in classes with students. I know that the overwhelming majority over there, and excuse me, these takes of language, but I'll just say it like it is, they truly give a crap about everything on that campus and in the city, just like y'all do. But you gotta take this and move forward. Us eight up here, I'm not gonna sit here and make excuses either. You know, we're gonna be here, as Chief Johnson and you all know, we're gonna be here to help them on anything and everything. But you as a community, that you gotta get the rest of your residents geared up, backing you on lighting streets, making the neighborhoods feel safer. Talking of, and making that phone call, whether it's the crime stopper, the Chief Stevens' phone number, my narcotic guy, it doesn't make any difference where they make the call. But you, the people of this community, the pride that y'all have are the ones that's gonna have to convince your neighbor, hey, we need to get on the right track and move this thing forward. Because, ladies and gentlemen, and I've seen it, I've seen it before, I see it here, would we love maybe to keep this place just a nice, happy little rural area? It's not gonna happen, people. Houston, Montgomery County, and Fordville County is shoving down our throat every day. The majority of it'll be good, financially for the county, jobs for people. Most of it will be. But there is gonna be a percent that it's gonna be bad business, okay? And it's gonna take all of it. And I'll stand here as Glenn Smith and say that I'll even take it as self-power and stay more committed with the Sheriff's Office. But you, the people, just remember that we're pride, take that pride of what this city has and what it's done and where it's been from 36 years ago when me and Larry Johnson was driving through here, it's different. But 36 years from now, it's gonna be different more. And what we do leaving here tonight will affect that 36 years. And that's the way you've gotta look at the rest of your life and the community here, okay? I'm not a pastor, I shouldn't preach it. But just remember that, and we'll be there for y'all, okay? But the push has gotta come from out here, okay? So we're here for you, alright?
Thank you, Chief.
Appreciate the opportunity to be here. The sheriff is correct. I'm sure most of you have read or heard that we're fixing the, well, the ground's already been broken, being worked as we speak, a 490-acre project just outside the city of Waller. It's gonna employ 4,000 people. We just found out last night that there's gonna be an additional 1,700 people employed on a part-time basis during summertime. So that'll be some good opportunities probably for students. So we're excited about that. But with that, it'll bring more issues. We just need to build a foundation for that growth.
Appreciate it. Chief Stevens?
Yes, first of all, I think the most important thing for me to say to you guys is, what happens in the city of Prairie View directly affects what happens on our campus. What happens on our campus directly affects what happens to you. Whatever your census numbers are, times that by at least two more kids because for every kid that lives in an apartment complex, they invite two friends over who hang out on that campus every day, all day long, alright? And so I started off by talking to you guys about resources. When I talk about resources, and I think the constable said something very important, preventive patrolling, that's important, but you can't do that unless you have resources. You have to have the bodies to do that. Right now, everything is reactionary, alright? What I'm asking you guys to do is when you go to your city council meetings and when you meet as a group, you may have to have some inconvenience in your lives, some unfortunate stuff, tax increases, those things to generate resources. That has to happen. That happens with growth. That happens with jobs coming on. That happens with tax abatements, all those things. Those are quality of life issues. If you want to be safe, sometimes you gotta pay for that. It's not for me personally, it's not for Chief Johnson and his people or the constable, whether you're talking about city or county issues. It's talking about growth, and somebody has to fund that. We all want quality of life. And so while we're all here concerned, 99% of the kids on this campus are great kids. 99% of the people here are great. It's the 1% of people that come to populations to take advantage of the few, I mean, of the greater good. We gotta fund keeping the few bad ones out. Boots on the ground. I think I talked to the mayor today and the chief and told him that. We gotta have boots on the ground.
Constable, will you close with it? Constable?
First of all, I want to thank all of my officers for being here tonight. Every one of them are reserved. They don't get paid. They come out here using their own money to do it. And I want y'all, I appreciate everything that y'all do to make this agency better. to make this agency better. And, uh... Y'all best y'all better, and I wanna just thank you for it. And, uh, citizens, we here, and we gotta do everything we can to work with the city to make this a better community. And I know I've talked with Chief Harley, he already committed himself to whatever we decide to do, and I, I know the sheriff is with us, and I've seen, uh, uh, chief out here many times, and, uh, we see the city of, uh, of community, it's university chief out here doing murder and all that, but we all, once again, I said, we all have to work together. You know, we got to work together to make this happen. We can't throw nothing in it, but we work together, we make it happen, and I guarantee you, citizen, if you all work with us, we're gonna make this thing happen.
You know, it's been talked about up here on this board, you know, unity, is the word that I'd like to use, unity. I can tell you that our district attorney's office is unified with all of us. You know, I've seen great improvements, uh, even recently, you know, the, the DA's office is constantly involved in to help us, and that's a big asset to law enforcement, because without prosecution, you know, we're dead in the water. All we're doing is circling maggot. Well, I don't, I don't believe we're doing it in this county. Your chief here in Prairie View and, and Chief Tina here, uh, they work well together. Your constable works well together. The city of Hempstead, we have a lot of students in our area, we have a lot of people from Prairie View come to Hempstead to do business. We welcome them. We want you to feel safe. And I've committed to Chief Johnson when he first got here, and to Constable Smith, whatever they need from Hempstead, I'll make the resources available. You know, if they need my people to come help, we will come help. If they need whatever, and I've got it, it's there, and that still stands. I know that Chief Johnson's reached out to me two or three times and we've talked, and I, I, you know, he knows that I got his back if he needs it. We're here, we're united, which is, which is unusual, and I think the sheriff, sheriff would tell you too. I've been a cop for thirty, thirty-one years, and you've heard different ones up here talk about thirty years, thirty-something years, thirty-something years, start doing the math, you've got a couple hundred years worth of experience in law enforcement right sitting right here in front of you. We know what we're doing. We can't do it alone. We can't. We've got to have your commitment, your, it doesn't mean that you're stitches, it means you care about your community, and you want it to be a nice place to raise your children, your grandkids, and so on. So, everyone here needs everyone's unity and help, and I'm here to help whatever I can do.
I just, I appreciate everybody being here, I think this is a, a productive gathering, but I, I'd like to encourage, particularly in, in my instance, citizens of Prairie View to be involved. We, we have to get involved, we have to, 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 maybe sometime it, it calls you to put yourself out a little bit, uh, to get out of your comfort zone sometime, but to be involved, support our council, support our mayor, let them know what it is that, that you want, and one of the things that I've said since I first came here is that, uh, we need to know what you want. I don't wanna assume that, that we know. There are some basic things that we do as law enforcement, but there, there are other things that, that, that we can be involved with. As we have, uh, tried to increase our staffing, uh, we will become, have an opportunity to be more involved. I'm, I'm a strong proponent, proponent of community policing, and what that simply means is that partnership between the law enforcement and the community, uh, we have to do that, it's not, it's not optional, that, that's what we have to do in order for all of us to make this thing work to be safe. So, I would encourage you and ask you to be supportive of our, our, the, the city leadership. Uh, it's been part of my responsibility, I think, to try to do the best I can to, to educate them, to let them know what it is that we need as, as for the police department, and, and we, we, we've made progress. Uh, I spent thirty-four years working in a college town, in college station with fifty-plus thousand students, I, I understand how they work. I, I, I'm used to dealing with, with that type of environment, uh, but I'll tell you, I'm just as proud of, of being here, of being the police chief in the city of Prairie View, and we're gonna do everything we can to make sure that the citizens here, uh, not only are, 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 feel safe, and that's, that's a big part of it, is, is that feeling of being safe, and, and as well as making sure that the, the criminal element understands that this is not a place they can come hang out. That's, that's part of our mission, and, and I believe together, all of, one of the first things I did when I, when I came on board is I met with the district attorney, met with all the chiefs and all that, because we understand that, that we have to do this together, where we're not an island unto ourselves. What happens in, in Prairie View affects Hempstead and Waller and the university, it, it does. The criminals don't respect boundaries, they don't have a city limit line that they stop at, so we, we have to work together, and that's one of the things I've been impressed with since I've been here, that, that level of cooperation, and I'll tell you, that's an exception, it is not the rule, uh, particularly in law enforcement, it, it is not. I, there's not been one time that I've called on any one of these, uh, the chiefs, the district attorney, that I have not gotten a returned call, hadn't gotten a, a positive response, and that's what it's gonna take. And so, we're, we're working together, sometimes it doesn't seem like any, anything is happening, but I, I guarantee you, every single day, we're chipping away at that thing, we're making, we're making progress. But, uh, you know, as I said, that we, we come to work every day for the purpose of serving the citizens and the community, and the day that that stops being important to me is the day I'll stop doing it. But I, I, I look forward to coming to work every day to try to make this a safer, a better community. We're committed to doing that. It's, you know, to me, it's, it's just that simple, we're gonna do all that we can with what we have, and, and we try to do that in, in the constraints of understanding that there's not unlimited budgets, there's not unlimited resources, but our responsibility is to use what we have as effectively and efficiently as we can, and it does, I, I'm just not gonna spend any time worrying about what I don't have. We, we make, we reevaluate almost daily, okay, what do we have and what do we need to do to make this work? Because what was, what was relevant last week, a, as all of you know, the world changes constantly, and, and if you're not moving forward, you're losing ground. There, there's no, in my opinion, there's no such thing as status quo, the world is changing very quickly, and we have to try to stay on top of that. So, we constantly reevaluate, and we have to constantly readjust the lens that we're looking through, because what, what it looked like yesterday, last week, it, it might just be different. So, we look at what we're doing. So, so we're, we're making progress, and, and I appreciate, I've had an opportunity to meet a lot of the, the people here and got support from, you know, from, so we're, we're, we're moving forward. Things are not what we'd like it to be, but, uh, we're working toward that goal.
Uh, Mr. District Attorney, we're gonna close on you, but before you do, I wanna thank you, because watching and hearing your sincerity on that newscast, and then hearing you on Wednesday morning, made me move. I had no idea, I wanna thank all of, all of you for coming, but I just knew we had to do something, I didn't exactly know what, but when you said all of them were here, and you talked about what additional resources you were requesting from the county to help with that, I, I learned some things at Prairie View, and, you know, you kinda, in, in the army, you kinda lead, follower, you get out of the way. So, you know, this is where we are, but what I'd like you to close with, sir, if you don't mind, from a county perspective, maybe even quarterly, you know, some update on what's going on, other people will be coming out, and, you know, you guys can continue to report the progress and what you need from us, but if there's something that you can possibly commit to, than everybody else, to maybe get together quarterly for an update on what's going on, and how much better is continuing to get? Yes, sir?
Well, I would love to, um, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Allen, and I wanna thank Marie Herden for giving me this privilege to come here tonight, uh, resident my whole life of Hempstead, aside from the time that I was away. Um, and, and I think we've seen it tonight, uh, there's a lot of people that just have a bad attitude, and there's a lot of people that don't wanna see success, and there's a lot of people that thrive on contention. But what I see here in this room, and what I see in our county, my county, your county, is this is the, one of the most exciting times, despite all the bad things we're talking about, this is an exciting time to be a resident of Prairie View and the city of Waller County, because as I sit here, I don't ever remember a time when anything like this has ever happened in this county.
Right.
Where people are actually coming together, having open dialogue, and talking about taking the chips off of our shoulder, if we have them, forgetting about our political agendas, and saying, "It's important that all of us, no matter our age, our skin color, socioeconomic status, we as residents of Waller County wanna make this place a place where we all want to be." So, that's an exciting thing that we need to take away from here tonight. Now, you asked about what we're gonna do from here, and I, the gentleman that was sitting back here, with all my fiber of my being, we need to prove him wrong. We need to prove him wrong, that we're not gonna just leave here and pat ourselves on the back and say, "That was a nice little talk, now let's go back home." So, I do think we need follow-up, but what I can pledge to do is to be available for that follow-up. I will be here, or a representative from my office will be here. Uh, the other thing that we have to do in this county, and we're starting in my office, is it's time to fish or cut bait, and that means it's time to get rid of our underperforming attorneys, our underperforming staff, and I look at all these chiefs and the sheriff when I've got together, it's time for you guys to get rid of your dead weight. And, and, and city council people, mayors, it's time you support these people when it's time to get rid of their dead weight, because I, as DA, I've had some of my own dead weight I've had to get rid of in the past, without naming names, and it's time that we take this county forward and say, "You know what, we're not second class, we deserve the best, and we need to demand the best." Out of our police departments, our district attorney, our city councils, our mayors, we deserve the best. So, in that respect, I continue to commit to work with all the ladies and gentlemen here, continue to commit to work with you all. Please let me know, uh, what further endeavors that you all take as a group, and I'll be glad to be a part of that. And just from my perspective, what, I'm gonna continue to do what I promised, we'll help, we're gonna be helping the chief with patrol of the city of Prairie View for a while, till he can kinda regroup and decide what all he's gonna do, and you're gonna see my agents working in Prairie View and around this area, uh, to make it uncomfortable for criminal element. The, the gentleman that spoke about streetlights, criminals are like roaches, as soon as you turn the light on, they scatter.
Yes.
And with all of us turning the lights on, doing your part to turn, literally, to figuratively turn the light on, you can totally change the way things are going, not only in Prairie View, but in Waller County, and that's something that we should all be excited about to do together.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you all.
I ride everywhere, fuckin' outside. I haven't, I haven't got a license yet, I gotta go get a license, but I, I ride everywhere. So, I go, I got grandkids in, uh, Fort Bend and in Brazoria County. So, tomorrow I got the grandkids in, in Fort Bend County, I'm taking care of them. It's the weekend I got them in Brazoria County, I gotta go pick them up. Well, you never asked me. After I get by the mountain street, part of the street, Army of the Highlands, Al Kalabai. Al Pilate, major problem. Man, I'm so glad to see you, though. All right. Bye, take care.